Good evening, everyone. This is the August 27th meeting of the Revere City Council. Would everyone please rise to salute the flag? Roll call of the members. Counselor Guanasso.
Here.
Here, Counselor Keith.
Here.
Here, Counselor McKenna.
Here.
Here, Counselor Morbido.
Here.
Here, Counselor Novoselski.
Here.
Here, Counselor Patch.
Here.
Here, Counselor Powers.
Yeah.
Here, Counselor Rizzo. Here, Counselor Rotundo. Is absent, Counselor Zambudo.
Here.
Here, and Council President Janino.
Here.
Here, quorum is present.
Madam President.
Counselor.
Madam President, I point a personal privilege. You know, this past weekend, we lost a very great American. I'd like to offer a moment of silence in memory of a great American, Senator John McCain from the state of Arizona. Thank you.
Calendar Item Number Two, Approval of the Journal of the Regular Meeting of July 3rd, July 23rd, 2018.
So ordered. Move.
Calendar Item Number Three, That the City Council Award Certificates of Merit to Deputy Jim Petro, Lieutenant Brown, Firefighter Petrilli and Rusa of the Revere Fire Department for their extraordinary lifesaving actions taken to rescue a resident at Lee's Trailer Park during a fire on May 29th, 2018. So at this time, I'm going to have Chief Bright, as well as the members from the Revere Fire Department that are being honored this evening, come before the council, and I'm going to let the chief take over.
To the city councilors, to our citizens, family and friends of Revere firefighters here to support us this evening, to our union, our union president, Kevin O'Hara couldn't be, he's sick this evening. Hope he feels better. But it's an honor to be here to recognize our members here for their actions at Lee's Trailer Park. I'm just going to read a little bit from it here. And before I get going, I'd like to thank Paul Coolahan, who's here also. Paul works as a call taker and dispatcher at the Metro North Regional Emergency Communication Center, and they're the ones who take on 911 calls and dispatch for the city of Revere and the town of Winthrop. Paul also works over in Chelsea and happened to be at this fire and witnessed the whole event, and he was the one who kind of notified me. And here we are this evening. So on the evening of May 29th, at approximately 21:42 hours, or about quarter to 10:00, companies were making up from a water rescue on Revere Beach. A box was struck for a reported trailer home fire at 418 Revere Beach Parkway, Lee's Trailer Park, Lot 31. Deputy Jim Petro was the incident commander and the first to arrive. He reported fire and smoke showing from the trailer. Neighbors reported to C4 that the occupant was home and never escaped the fire. C4 forced entry on the main door of the trailer, encountered a heavy fire and smoke condition. C4 ordered Ladder 2, who arrived next on scene, to conduct a primary search. The Ladder 2 crew, without regard for their own personal safety, using bare hands and tools, without the protection of a charge hose line, entered the trailer fire to search for the missing victim. Simultaneously, Deputy Jim Petro cross-ventilated the trailer windows as Ladder 2 crew located the victim and rescued and removed him from the fire. The 60-year-old victim was unconscious, barely breathing, but alive. Ladder 2 crew passed the victim outside the trailer to crews on scene to assist with resuscitative efforts. The patient was transported by Cataldo ambulance paramedics to the Massachusetts General Hospital. The last update reported that the victim had survived the fire but was in an intensive care unit at the Mass General Hospital. If not for the fast actions and bravery performed at the fire by incident commander Deputy Chief Anthony Jim Petro and the crew from Ladder 2, Lieutenant William Brown, firefighter William Petrilli, and firefighter Patrick Rusa, the victim would not have been saved and would have perished in the fire. Very proud of you guys.
So it was the citations, and then we lost them. So we have some citations on behalf of the city council that I will read and we will hand out. So City of Revere Certificate of Merit, an acknowledgement of extraordinary distinguished and meritous achievement, accomplishment, special recognition is hereby accorded to Deputy Chief Anthony Jim Petro, Revere Fire Department. Late Tuesday evening on May 29th, you went above and beyond the call of duty to save the life of a resident of 418 Revere Beach Parkway, Revere, Massachusetts, who was unconscious from smoke inhalation and trapped inside a burning trailer which was completely engulfed in flames. Without hesitation in regard for your own personal safety, you pulled the victim from safety and away from a most certain death. Your selfless actions will never be, will forever be remembered. And witness of this certificate of merit is gratefully bestowed by the mayor and the city council of the city of Revere, Massachusetts, at City Hall this 27th day of August in the year of our Lord 2018, in the Independence of the United States of America, the 242nd. It was ordered by a vote of the Revere City Council and offered by Council President Janino, signed by City Clerk Ashley Melnick and Mayor Brian Regal. Lieutenant William Brown. Firefighter William Petrilli. Firefighter Patrick Rusa. Thank you all. You make the city of Revere proud every single day, but it's moments like these that we're so very grateful for your service. So thank you all, from behalf of the council. The mayor's also in attendance, as well as Police Chief Guido, so thank you on behalf of all of us.
Thank you.
Calendar Item Number Four, That the City Council Award a Certificate of Commendation to Carrie Abrams, owner of Kinship Floral, for donating a kidney to John Nucci.
Dear colleagues and friends, it's not often that one gets to give a presentation to a real-life hero. The giver of life is the most sacred thing any human being can do for one another. We have within our community such a person. She donated a kidney to an individual who needed it in order to preserve his life. He wasn't a family member, he was just a friend. And to offer out this type of lifesaving effort to a friend is beyond words. She shows her size is small, but her heart is huge. Her generosity of human life will never be forgotten by certainly John. John Nucci will be the lucky person to receive a kidney from a wonderful, wonderful person. And, you know, that gives and extends his life to the fullest, and I just can't say enough of this great thing. People out there that are watching, those in the audience, go to the Motor Vehicle Association, Registered Motor Vehicles, and register as a life donor. It's the greatest gift you can give to anybody. Many, many years ago, I was one of the helpers that started that foundation. I worked for the Mass General Hospital, and we started the New England Organ Bank with a grant of $200,000. When I left a few years back, it grew so big for me, I had to make a decision whether to stay with Mass General or stay with the Organ Bank. I had to stay with Mass General because that's where I initially started. But the jobs, the men and women that they do at the New England Organ Bank is true testimony as to what we see here now. I was lucky enough to see one of the first kidney transplants. I had to dress in all-white gear. It was like going into a chamber, and things have changed so much. When I saw them coming by with the cooler, with the kidneys in it, and I just, what are you doing? This was saving a person's life, and that's the same means that they use today to transport hearts, livers, and everything. So this is the greatest gift that you can give to one another, and this brave, brave human being, I just can't say enough for her because it shows what she is. And she is a dedicated person to the Kinship Flower Shop, is what she owns on Revere Street. And she's as generous and as nice to all the people who go in there because that's the type of person that Carrie is. And so I just can't say enough for her, and I know John must wake up the first thing in the morning and say a prayer to Carrie because that's the thing to do, because what a wonderful person you are. And I just want you to know that. I will read this commendation as prepared by the city clerk. An acknowledgement for giving the gift of life by donating a kidney to longtime family friend and former Boston City Councilor, John Nucci, who is suffering from a fatal genetic disorder, I'm having a real problem here, polycystic kidney disease? Special recognition is hereby accorded to Carrie Abrams. It witness whereof, this certificate of commendation is gratefully bestowed by the city council, the city of Revere, Massachusetts, on behalf of its citizens, this 27th day of August in the year of our Lord 2018, in the Independence of the United States of America, the 242nd. Offered out by Counselor Arthur Guanasso, and signed off by Council President Jessica Janino, and is tested to by City Clerk Ashley Melnick. Congratulations. John would like to say a few words. Being a former city council, we know he can do it.
The first thing I'm going to say is I'm going to call on Carrie to go first because it's her that we're honoring here tonight. She is an absolute angel. She's my angel, she's my wife Peggy's angel, she's my entire family's angel. We, with the help of my wife and my three wonderful sons, we conducted what was essentially a national, nationwide search to find a kidney. And we found one in our own backyard. We found one from a young woman who just wanted to help, who read about in the newspaper my journey, my plight, my dilemma, and read that I needed a new kidney and that I was very, very sick. And I was very, very sick. And she looked at her partner and said, "I want to help." And she went through the testing, and it's rigorous testing, and she was ruled a match. What that meant to me, I can't describe. The other thing I can't do is I can't find the words to thank Carrie. I tell her that all the time. I don't know what to say. What do you say to somebody who gives you a second chance at life? There are no words. The city of Revere has produced a true hero in Carrie Abrams.
You want to say hi?
Hi.
It's really hot, I don't have a lot to say. I thank you very much. I'm not alone, standing here today as the only donor in front of you. I believe that, I don't want to call him out by name, but Patrick Keith has also been a kidney donor. Counselor Patch's wife has also been a kidney donor. All I can extend is what I learned and what I gained is just as much as what John has. If you're not a donor, think about it. Think about putting on your license if somebody in your family or friend is in need. It is a small contribution to what you gain in life, so think about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
John, Keith and your daughter, you can hold this, and John can get on.
Good job, thank you. John. Keith and your daughter, you can hold this, and John can get on.
That was a great way to start the night. All right, at this time, I'm going to call for a suspension of rules. All in favor?
All opposed.
All opposed. So ordered. We're going to take up calendar items 15 and 16. Madam Clerk? Calendar Item Number 15, Communication from the Election Commissioner Requesting Approval of the Warrant for the State Primary on Tuesday, September 4th, 2018.
Okay. Diane Colala, 60 Austin Street, Election Commission. I respectfully request the approval of the warrant for the state primary on Tuesday, September 4th.
Thank you. Any councilors have any questions?
Move to approve.
This motion approved. This is also a good opportunity to remind everyone that there is an election. It's kind of an odd month, so everyone, don't forget to go out and vote. Put a reminder in your phones. Roll call? No, no roll call? All in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Calendar Item Number 16, Communication from the Chief of Police Presenting the FY18 Edward Burns Memorial Justice Assistant Grant Program. Chief.
Good evening, Madam Chairperson. This is an annual event. We submitted the Burns Grant. One of the requirements is the city council has to approve it. I'll just go over the highlights. Most of it's for community engagement. This year, we started a youth academy. We had two separate ones, it was a huge success, and we added that into this grant, so part of the money will pay for that. We're going to continue that. The kids really enjoyed it. Captain O'Hara did a wonderful job. She's in charge of community service, and this money will be mostly for her division.
Thank you, Chief. Any councilors have any questions?
Motion approved.
On the motion, all in favor? All opposed? So ordered. Thank you, Chief. This time, we're turned to the regular order of business. Calendar Item Number Five, Hearing Called Is Ordered on an Ordinance Promoting All Public Parks as Drug, Alcohol, Tobacco, and Weapon-Free Zones. This is a public hearing. Are there any proponents here this evening? Anyone here to speak? Seeing and hearing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Are there any opponents here this evening? Anyone opposed? Seeing and hearing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. This time, I'm going to offer it up to city councilors. This was a motion that myself and Counselor McKenna put in, so I'm going to start with Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Madam President. Not too long ago, this came up because not too long ago, in Beauchamp, at one of the parks, we found three syringes underneath a bush where kids were currently playing. So I talked to President Janino to put this motion in so we can have alcohol, tobacco, and weapon-free zone in every park in the city. I think it's a great motion, and I think it should be approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McKenna. Counselor Powers.
Thank you, Madam President. This certainly is a great motion, and I believe that lighting in the parks has already proven itself in a very positive way. Last year, we did over the park, the Soup Park in Oak Island, and one of the things that we did was to increase the wattage on all of the lights surrounding that park. And it's gone from what once was a hangout for kids down there, teenagers and drug activity, it's gone to an area like it should be, open to the public with no problems down there. And also, I want to thank the mayor for allowing us an extra $100,000 to put lighting in Gibson Park also down at Point of Pines, which will be done this fall. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Counselor Novoselski.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, I think this is a great ordinance. We did talk about it last year, and it went on signed eye, but I'm glad I convinced Counselor McKenna to reinstitute it and bring it back up, and I think it's something worthy, and we have to protect our kids, and this is one way to do it. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Any Counselor? Zambudo.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm sure this is going to committee, and it's probably my committee, because there are some fine points I'd like to go over. However, I think the ordinance has certain merit, and it's, I look forward to discussing it in committee, probably my committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other councilors?
If I may, briefly, this is something that I worked on Counselor McKenna with. It's something that I believe died and signed eye multiple times. You know, I put it in before she was elected, it died, and then with the help of my vice president, we brought it back. So I want to thank her for her efforts, and I think that it's a good move in the right direction, and I look forward to discussing it in Legislative Affairs.
Calendar Item Number Six, Hearing Called Is Ordered on an Ordinance Further Amending the Zoning Ordinances of the City of Revere Relative to the LI District. This is a public hearing, so at this time, I'll call any proponents.
Loretta Lacentra, 30, John Avenue. I just wanted to let you know that I am in favor of the motion. We have a property in the Riverside neighborhood that is zoned, limited, industrial, and our entire neighborhood is zoned for single-family residential, except for this property. I'm pretty sure that every counselor in the room is aware that many inappropriate residential developments we've had to fight over the years. We have, we're just tired of fending off unscrupulous developers. In 2014, we fought a 42-unit residential development, and in 2017, there was a 110-unit 40B apartment building that was proposed for the site. Mind you, this property is only 50,000 square feet. Since most residents of the city, and most of you as councilors, are starting to question the wisdom of any additional multifamily residential building in the city, now is the time to help achieve that goal by voting for this motion. So this motion will stop any new multifamily residential products, projects, rather, in the LI-zoned areas. It does still allow single-family dwellings, which fits well with the rest of our neighborhood. So I thank you for your support of this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents here this evening? Seeing and hearing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Any opponents here this evening? Anyone opposed? Seeing and hearing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. This time, I'll offer it up to the city council. Counselor Powers.
Thank you, Madam President. This is something that, a motion that I had submitted about a month ago, and I think it, what it does is it brings in conformity, to into conformity, all of the area down there. Probably about a dozen years ago, Counselor Rizzo was chairman of the zoning subcommittee, and I prevailed upon him to change the zoning in the entire Point of Pines and the Grove section of Oak Island to RA1, which means single-family only. At that time there, you could build a two-family, or a three-family, or just about anything you wanted with approval from the city council. And what this does is it changes that whole area down there to single-family. I believe they can probably put in three or four single-family homes down there, although I certainly wouldn't given the flooding conditions down there. And they can keep it as a boatyard, and I think there are a couple of other uses that are acceptable down there. But it doesn't make sense to me to have an area all single-family and then have someone come in and put a 40-unit building, or an apartment building, or a condo, or something like that. It's the wrong thing for the area. It's a very pristine area down there, and that's the way I think we should keep it, and I'm asking my colleagues to support me on this when it comes for a vote. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Zambudo.
Thank you, Madam President. Again, this is a
Any other proponents here this evening? Seeing and hearing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Any opponents here this evening? Anyone opposed? Seeing and hearing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. This time, I'll offer it up to the city council. Councilor Powers?
Thank you, Madam President. This is something that, a motion that I had submitted about a month ago, and I think it, what it does is it brings in conformity, to into conformity, all of the area down there. Probably about a dozen years ago, Councilor Rizzo was chairman of the zoning subcommittee, and I prevailed upon him to change the zoning in the entire Point of Pines and the Grove section of Oak Island to RA1, which means single-family only. At that time there, you could build a two-family, or a three-family, or just about anything you wanted with approval from the city council. And what this does is it changes that whole area down there to single-family. I believe they can probably put in three or four single-family homes down there, although I certainly wouldn't, given the flooding conditions down there. And they can keep it as a boatyard, and I think there are a couple of other uses that are acceptable down there. But it doesn't make sense to me to have a, an area all single-family, and then have someone come in and put a 40-unit building, or an apartment building, or a condo, or something like that. It's the wrong thing for the area. It's a very pristine area down there, and that's the way I think we should keep it. And I'm asking my colleagues to support me on this when it comes to a vote. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, councillor. Councilor Zambudo?
Thank you, Madam President. Again, this is a serious change, and I'm sure it deserves hearing in the zoning committee, and I look forward to the debate that goes on then. Thank you.
Councillor?
Thank you very much, Madam President. Just want to offer my brief remarks as a proponent of this zoning change. As Councilor Powers alluded to, you know, we recognized many years ago that there was an onslaught of overgrowth in neighborhoods, in this particular case, in the Riverside of the Pines, and in the Point of Pines. The one thing that was left over was the boatyard, and we know that there have been proposals from owners down there that have been some outright crazy, you know, to others that just aren't in concert with the neighborhood down there. So anything that comes before the city council that's going to help our neighborhoods preserve the character that they have, and slow down the growth that we have seen with respect to residential development, is something that I'll support, and I'm going to support this as well. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you, councillor. Any other councilors wishing to speak? This will go to zoning.
Calendar item number seven, Hearing called as ordered on the application of Anthony Spinazzola, 199 East Woodcrest Drive, Melrose, seeking an amendment, a zoning map amendment to the, for the, from HB to RB.
This is a public hearing, so at this-
I'm sorry, RB to HB, excuse me.
RB to HB, thank you, Madam Clerk. This is a public hearing, so at this time, I'll call any proponents. Anyone here to speak in favor? Attorney Simeoni?
Someone left us the phone. Oh, okay, leave it up there. Oh, okay. Very good.
For anyone that comes up to the podium, the phone is for the press. They're recording the meeting, so it's okay. Thank you.
Very good. Madam President, members of the Revere City Council, this evening, I represent Anthony Spinazzola of LAJS Management Corporation, Inc. He's an applicant for a change in zoning in accordance with 1712, 110, and then 030. Specifically, Mr. Spinazzola seeks to rezone two small parcels of land in the North Revere area. The first parcel is Lot 10 on its deed, and is identified in map 34, 466A, as Lot 1 on the assessor's map. It is approximately 4,173 square feet. It is located in the RB district, and is presently vacant. It is also located in the North Revere Overlook District under the existing lot ordinance. There's also another piece of land that actually abuts this property, and that is Lot 11 on the deed. Map 34, Block 466A, Lot 17, is identified as Lot 17 Theresa Ave. It is 4,282 square feet, located in the RB district. It is vacant, and it also is in the North Revere Overlay District for existing lots. The proposal before you is to change the two lots that you see in pink from RB to HB. My client purchased the property in 2005 from Carl Rowe, and he has used this property as a buffer between the hotel site that currently exists on the property and the neighborhood. And for all intensive purposes, this proposal is to make that buffer in perpetuity. Essentially, my client wants uniform zoning for the entire hotel site. It will be HB, as it is in Saugus, also highway business nature. And he has no intention of building on this 8,000-square-foot of land. He intends to leave the status quo, and the only thing we could ever see it ever being used for is if the hotel itself required additional parking, which we don't believe they'll never happen. So the hotel was built in 1988, in 1989. It is a hotel that has, currently has 155 units. It once had 105 units, and then the Marriott came in, and the city of Revere once again allowed an expansion of this in order to get a Marriott name brand on the proposal. My client, Mr. Spinazzola, has been doing business in the city of Revere for many years. He's no stranger. He grew up in Revere. His family's been in Revere since the 1900s. He started his landscaping business right out of high school in 1965 from Revere High School, and he's retired from that landscaping business in 1993. He was fortunate enough to amass the parcels that you see in yellow, along with the Saugus parcels, to invite a hotel developer at a time when Revere was persona non grata for hotel development. There was only one hotel in the entire community. And through working with the Colala administration, he was able to meet with the city council and meet with the Revere Planning Board, and have, in 1986, have that land endorsed for highway business use. In 1989, the hotel was subsequently made. So just to clarify, and we'll stand to ask any questions you have, I just want to point out on the plan that- This is the hotel site? This needs a property? Can you take it? I can? Yeah? And not make a fool of myself? Okay. All right. Yep, if not. Anyway, the hotel site is yellow, and that's the original site. It's always something. This particular piece of property is currently used for off-street parking. That particular piece of property also provides off-street parking to the hotel. That particular piece of property was purchased by the tenant, lessee. My client leases the land to the hotel, so the lessee purchased that property for additional parking. These two parcels of land, as I noted to you before, are in the North Revere Overlay District, which, under the existing lot ordinance, could be built for residential use. The change in zoning, I believe, and I haven't really cleared this with Frank Stringi, who I hadn't had time to reach, but I believe once we changed this to HB, that existing lot overlay rights to build a two-family house will no longer exist. The lot size in the HB district is 15,000 square feet. There's only 8,000 square feet here. So the lots would merge into the hotel district, which is what my client truly wants, to remain there in perpetuity, staying with the entire site. And so I think it's a step in the right direction. I think Mr. Spinazzola firmly believes that this is the right move to make, and I would ask you, Madam President, to have this matter go to subcommittee, and we'll be before the Revere Planning Board tomorrow at 4:30, and we stand ready to answer any questions this honorable body may ask.
Thank you, Attorney Simeoni. Just for everyone's clarification, this will be going to the zoning subcommittee. The chair is absent, but I will discuss that with the clerk, and we'll set up a meeting prior to the next city council meeting. Any other proponents here this evening? Any other proponents? Seeing and hearing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Any opponents? Anyone opposed? Seeing and hearing none, I'll call, close that side of the hearing. Any city councilors wishing to speak? Again, this will be going to zoning, and we have a very lengthy agenda. I will ask the ward councillor. Councillor Patch?
I understand, thank you, Madam President. I understand that it is going to zoning, but I just want to make a point here at the public hearing, that I did go up there and walked the land up here, the land that's being considered here tonight with the owner, Mr. Spinazzola, and the attorney. And it's, if people are familiar with it, it's the Morris Street. You'll see a bunch of, like, townhouses, and then there's a vacant, there'll be a vacant spot, and then his land starts. And it's actually, it's a jungle. There's absolutely no use for this land at all. And it doesn't, it doesn't reach Route 1, so actually, it borders a paper street, which you can't build on. So I see no problem with the, being in favor of this, and I would hope my colleagues would too. Thank you.
Any other councilors? This will go to zoning. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Calendar item number eight, Hearing called as ordered on the application of Hector Randon, Department Restaurant, requesting permission to install an awning at 288 Broadway.
Again, this is a public hearing. Are there any proponents here this evening? Anyone here to speak in favor? Sure? Just want to hit the mic and then state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Chris. I'm from 108 Harvard Street, Wall Street. I'm actually the manufacturer. I'm making the awning.
Any comments, or just here to answer any questions?
Okay. Well, the only reason why we want to have this awning is basically so, the reason why we want to install this awning is because Mr. Hector already has another business, same name, same look, and he wants to keep that look for the name and the brand of his restaurant. These awnings are actually pretty small. They don't, they'll only hang, overhang about, I think it is 30 inches, so.
Thank you. If you wouldn't mind sticking around in case any councilors have any questions, or anyone has questions?
Sure.
Are there any other proponents here this evening? Any other proponents? Seeing and hearing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Are there any opponents here this evening? Anyone opposed? Seeing and hearing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Any councilors have any questions? Councillor Keith?
Thank you, Madam President. I've spoken, I've spoken to the owner, the people that are going to be operating this property. Obviously, they've been looking to get into business for the last over a year, about a year and a half. There's been some hurdles with maintaining their liquor license and cleaning up some issues, and they've done a very good job of that, doing everything very legitimately. So I would just expect that the awning fits the criterion for Revere, and if that's the case, then I'd be happy to, you know, I think I'd be very much in favor of getting the awning going, so this business can hopefully operate sooner than later.
Thank you, councillor. I agree with you, and that's why I'm going to ask if any councilors have any comments. There's no need for this to go to committee, so I'll ask anyone to ask any questions now. Councillor Guanasso?
The question I have, sir, is it nine feet in height? Is it nine feet above the sidewalk?
It's 10, 10 feet above the sidewalk.
The ordinance is nine. Okay, thank you.
Any other councilors? Roll call?
Shall the city council approve an awning permit to be installed at 288 Broadway? Councillor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Keith?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Rotundo is absent. Councillor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Councillor President Giannino?
Yes.
Yes, the awning permit has been approved? Calendar item number nine, Hearing called as ordered on the application of Hector Perez, Los Hornitos Bakery, requesting permission to install an awning at 372 Broadway.
Again, this is a public hearing, so I'll call any proponents.
It's me again.
Welcome back.
So, same thing. It's a new awning, new installation, new everything. It does meet the criteria for all city requirements. It is nine feet above the sidewalk. That's pretty much it.
All right, thank you. You can stick around if they have any questions. Any other proponents here this evening? Anyone here to speak in favor? Seeing and hearing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Any opponents? Anyone opposed? Seeing and hearing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Any councilors? Councillor Keith?
Thank you, Madam President. I echo the same comments, so long as they meet the criteria of the awning ordinance that we have in place, and I hope this gentleman does it on the same data, so you don't have to duplicate your efforts, and good luck. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Keith. I'll ask any other councilors again. I don't see any need for this to go to committee, so if you have any questions, please ask them now, and then if there are none, Madam Clerk, roll call.
Shall the city council approve an awning permit to be installed at 372 Broadway? Councillor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Keith?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Rotundo is absent. Councillor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Councillor President Giannino?
Yes.
Yes, the awning permit has been approved?
Before we go on to the committee, I'm going to ask for suspension of rules to take up an item for some people that are-
End of rules.
All in favor? All opposed? So ordered. Madam Clerk, can we take up calendar item number 17? Oh, no. 17?
Calendar item number 17, Communication from the Coalition to Protect Patient Safety Relative to Ballot Question 1 at the Upcoming Election.
Thank you for having us here tonight. My name's Donna Glenn. I'm the president of the American Nurses Association of Massachusetts. I'm the associate dean of nursing at Regis College, and I'm a nurse scientist for the VA healthcare system, and I'm a nurse for 39 years. And the ANA of Massachusetts strongly opposes question one on the ballot. The Mass Nurses Association, the MNA, is the union wing of the nursing organization in the Commonwealth. This is a union effort. The MNA represents approximately 24% of nurses in the Commonwealth, and along with the Emergency Nurses Association, the Organization of Nurse Leaders, the Home Care Association, the Infusion Nurses, we strongly oppose this ballot question. Why? Sounds like apple pie in America. More nurses must be a good thing. The mandate is that it's a one-size-fits-all solution. So no two patients are the same. No two hospitals are the same. No two nurses are the same. We all have different experience. I work with novice nurses at the college, and I'm a nurse of 39 years. I can care for a different patient mix than a brand-new nurse. But under this ballot question, it's one-size-fits-all, at all times, at all settings, 24/7. So the mandated on a medical surgical unit would be four to one. This is estimated to cost the Commonwealth of Massachusetts $1.3 billion in the first year of implementation, and then after that, approximately $900,000 each year. We would be required, after the November 6th election, should this bad question pass, to find 5,000 nurses to work in the Commonwealth before January 1st. If we couldn't, hospitals will close beds, because if they can't meet the mandated rigid ballot question, they would be fined $25,000 a day per incident. So the hospitals will close beds. What does that mean for your community? Decreased access to care? It's going to strip nurses from, your visiting nurses, from the community. Healthcare has changed dramatically in the last 20 years. The MNA first proposed this ballot question 20 years ago, and was unable to get through the legislature, so they decided to put it on a ballot question. Healthcare has changed dramatically in 20 years. Patients don't stay in the hospital, they're back in the community, and this initiative has the potential to strip nurses from long-term care, from behavioral health. The nurses fighting the opioid crisis will now be getting sign-on bonuses and going into the hospital. So when you see those lawn signs that say nurses support yes on one, I'm a nurse, and I say no on one. I'd just like to introduce Lynette.
Thank you, Madam President and councilors. Just briefly, Don, you've done a great job stating the situation. I represent Cambridge Health Alliance. I'm Lynette Alberti, the chief nursing officer. My colleague from Partners was unable to be here tonight, but I think this area is primarily served by Partners and CHA. Just at CHA alone, this ballot will cost between $13 and $14 million a year. That's, and if you're, if we're a public hospital, not-for-profit, I'm sure you're aware of our financials, and there's no way that that, we can support that hit. And what will occur is significant bed closures, most likely. As you may be aware, what I'm most concerned about, about- bed closures, most likely. As you may be aware, what I'm most concerned about, about forty percent of our admissions are behavioral health patients, so we have a, that is a huge service line for us, and we serve all, and we serve our most vulnerable populations. And I doubt anyone in this room has not been touched at some point in time by the lives of someone that was suffering with some sort of behavioral health illness. And what will occur is due to the ratios that are being imposed on ERs, is that what will happen is you won't even be able to get into the emergency room because the nurses will already have their mandated assignments. The behavioral health patients, if they're acutely ill, in the proposed mandates, have a one-to-two staffing ratio. So, in other words, a critical care staffing ratio, which is, there's no evidence or standard or national guideline that supports that staffing at all. The nurses, there won't be those nurses to care for those patients. In addition, we will most likely need to close some of our inpatient behavioral health beds. It's estimated that in the state, we're going to lose almost a third of our inpatient behavioral health beds if this ballot is passed. That's 1,000 beds, and most likely CHA will be a part of that. So, I just wanted you to be aware, it will really hit home in this community if this were to pass.
And so, why are we here? We're asking for your public opposition to ballot one, just as six mayors have signed on, almost forty Chamber of Commerce have signed on. We have the list of everyone who signed on, and we'd ask the City of Revere to consider publicly opposing ballot question one.
Thank you. Thank you both for your time. Is there anyone else here that is here to speak on this item this evening? Any members of the council? Counselor Rotundo.
Thank you. Being a nurse, myself, I'm going to ask the people of my community to vote yes, because you want to have better ratios to improve the care that you receive. There is much literature that states the contrary. Quite frankly, from my opinion, it is totally contrary to what management says, and that's what this is. I've been a frontline nurse for over twenty-some odd years. I worked on the most critically ill patients that you can ever see. Artificial hearts, dialysis, critically ill beyond complete belief. And the more nurses that you have taking care of a patient, the better off you are. There is no study to the contrary, is there, ma'am?
There are numerous studies to the contrary, and there are, California is the only state in the nation...
In Australia, in Canada.
In the nation, who passed this mandate. And California currently ranks twenty-fourth in the country as far as patient care outcomes. We're number two. I'm not saying staffing's perfect. I'm saying this bill is not the answer. The answer is the current legislation that has been filed federally to set up committee-based staffing, where each hospital starts a staffing committee, which has fifty-five percent of the members of that committee bedside nurses. By that model, and, we're going to keep the hospitals honest. Hospitals will be fined $10,000 if they don't, if they don't comply.
So, having been on that side of the issue on multiple occasions, as a nurse in charge, as a nurse manager, I know when my director tells me I have to crunch the numbers a little bit better, what that means. I know what that means when it's, when it's, you've got to slow down on the overtime, when I've got an acute patient need because we have greater needs for that month. So, you know, what do you, may I ask you?
Counselor.
What is your background?
Counselor.
Are you a bedside nurse?
Thank you both. With all due respect, we're not going to go back and forth and debate it. Thank you for educating us on it. Counselor, thank you for your input. If anyone is, has any more questions about it, I highly suggest to do some personal reading. Read about the issues that are on the ballots, educate yourself, and ask people that have the knowledge about it. With any questions you have, contact someone that's educated on it. Thank you for your input, and this will be placed on file. This time, we'll return to the regular order of business. All in favor, all opposed? Calendar item ten on mine, is it?
Calendar item number ten is the Committee of the Whole report, the Parking Operations Report, and Activities/Internal Controls Report.
Thank you. So, on August thirteenth, the Committee of the Whole met. I chaired that meeting because of Counselor Rotundo's motion regarding the parking operations and the issues that surrounded it. Again, this is under an investigation, a pending investigation, so comments were limited. However, people had an opportunity to state their piece. Out of the committee, there was a favorable recommendation that the following be sent to the full City Council for consideration, and that is that the mayor requests the state auditor and the FBI to investigate the operations of the parking department as it relates to the parking operations report submitted to the City Council by Mayor Rego on July 23rd, 2018. So, at that time, we'll offer that motion up to the council of the whole.
Madam President, that's not what I recall. I had asked for an audit of the entire city, top to bottom. I mean, I recall distinctively what I said. Matter of fact, that I asked for a complete audit by the state auditor and that the City Council requests that the state auditor and the FBI investigate the operations of government, top to bottom. I'd like to amend that for now. I mean, at the end of the day, that's what this needs. You know, we did this with the DPW several years back. Now, we're dealing with the parking. Let's, let's, you know, let's get this done for the entire city. And if we were able to find issues in one department, we're going to be able to find them in other departments. And my thought is this, better to get it done now, ensure the sanctity of the operation of government. These people sitting out there right here, they pay a lot of taxes, and I know you agree with me. So, by ensuring that we get this done by the state auditor, A, it's not political. Not the mayor, it's not the council, it's the state auditor. And I'm sure the mayor wants to move the city forward, and I'm with you on that. And I want accountability. That's the only way you can ensure unbiased accountability, is have the state auditor come in and evaluate everything, top to bottom. It might cost a little money. We've got someone in the rainy day and fight. I'm more than happy to share that with them in order to make your money work better. And I think that's the best thing for the city. So, if you agree with moving the city better, excuse me, moving the city forward and making your money work better for you, then I want everybody to support me to have a top-to-bottom review of all operations within the city by the state auditor. And I would like the mayor's input, because at the end of the day, he is the CEO of this great community. And at the end of the day, we have to work with him to move this city forward. But accountability is number one here. Thank you.
Thank you. On the motion is amended.
Madam President.
Counselor.
Just my clarification. My remembrance is that the FBI was not included in this because it's an audit, and we're just dealing with a state auditor. I don't believe that the FBI has anything to do with auditing a city. And I don't think it should be included in this. But also too, may I state that the state auditor doesn't necessarily have to accept coming in, you know, and I expect that it could cost us up to $200,000 for this to happen. I don't totally, I don't agree with this. I think we have our own auditors that we hire outside that do as good a job as the state auditor would, and I just don't think it's necessary to go through these actions. I voted for it against, I voted against it at the committee meeting, and I will vote against it again, because I don't believe it's necessary. Thank you.
Madam President.
Counselor.
I have no problem respecting Counselor Novoselsky's wish to remove FBI, because it makes perfect sense. What would happen is if the state auditor found any malfeasance, it would go to the internally, the inspector general, and then it would be referred to the FBI. So, you're correct, Counselor. I do disagree with him on the need for it, respectfully, and I leave it up to the body. Thank you.
Counselor Zambudo.
Thank you, Madam President. I never like to vote for blanket things that are left with the whole. I don't know what this is going to cost. I would like an estimate on this. I mean, if that's the request, is to get an estimate from the state auditor to do this, then we can take an informed vote on what that is. But right now, it's like, you know, okay, we want to, want to vote for an audit, but we don't know what it's going to cost. I can't, I can't do that. But I can certainly do it after I have an estimate, estimate.
Madam President.
Counselor.
In the past, what happened was, we submitted the vote. The vote went forward under Tom Ambrosino. He then submitted it to the state auditor. The state auditor then told us what the fee was going to be, and then we accepted that. Very similar process that we find ourselves in right now.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Keith.
Thank you, Madam Presidents. You know, I just, I think that there's definitely some areas of this city that can always be audited. You know, when we see, when we see some issues, obviously, there's some things going on right now, and there's still a current audit of cash-in and procedures going on, I believe, from department to department. We've just received one piece of that. But I, and I understand where Counselor Rotundo's coming from, but I just hate these blanket statements as well. I'm sick of going to work in Boston and having my coworkers, who, they see these great things that Revere are doing, and then the front page of the Herald has "Bringing the Feds." It's embarrassing, it's discouraging to our residents of the city. It's misleading, because this city is doing such great things. And I don't care about what administration you're with. I don't care about the prior administration. I think they did a fantastic job setting this current administration up. I think the administration before that did a fantastic job. Revere has been on a great roll for many years. I've lived here for fifteen years, and I'm so proud of living in this city. And I'm really sick of this turning into "Bring on the feds" and all of these other misleading topics that aren't reflective of what really is happening in this great city. So, whatever side of the fence you're on, that's perfectly fine. But we are a great city, and we can take a look at each department as things come up and as things go on. But I'm not going to be, sit up in this council chambers and try and bring this crazy audit every, every other week to bring up topics that then, when, when things are brought to surface, we don't want to do anything about it, because it might be our friend, or it might be our neighbor, or it might be a supporter of ours. We have a good city. Let's just keep rolling with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Point of privilege.
Counselor Rotundo, can you let everyone speak, and then you can speak to all of them, because we're going back and forth after everyone says something. Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Madam President. I wrote something. I'd like to read it, please. "I've always been proud to say that I live in Revere and work in Revere, but it saddens me that there is so much animosity in this city, so much division. People that were once friends don't speak anymore. One of the reasons I ran for council was to make Revere a better place to live, to lift the stigma and the poor reputation that this city has had, carried for the last fifty years. I love Revere, and I love the people who live here. I know many of you. I grew up in the same house that I, I still live in the same house that I grew up in. Can't we come together as a body of people and try to get along without division and animosity, with one purpose, to grow this wonderful city where we live, and shed the stigma and the reputation, and allow outsiders to see the beauty that Revere holds? Thank you."
Counselor Morabito?
Thank you.
McKenna, your mic's on.
I just want to applaud my colleague. That was well said, and I think...
Thank you.
I'm, I think we all feel the same way up here. Unfortunately, we're in a chamber where politics do play, and I understand how Counselor Rotundo is looking out for the betterment of the city by wanting the state auditor or wanting the FBI. But the auditor's role, state auditor's role, is to come into play when our, when they see red flags, when they see the cities aren't properly accounting their books. What we're doing is, we're taking all the actions necessary to make sure our budget, those line items, are in place, to make sure that they're balancing. We're, these operation reports and these cash management reports and these audits are currently being done. They're being done because we're, as a city, we're trying to improve how, if our money is spent, like, we're trying to improve whether our money is being spent the correct way, our funds in the correct line item. So, we are en route of doing all the positive things financially to better our city, and we're in the best, we have the best financial rating you can think of. So, I think the state auditor would look at it and be like, they're making changes. They're making attempts to move the city forward by taking the proper protocol, having operations and money management audits done. So, I think they're going to look at it and be like, are we going to waste our time? They're following best, we're, the City of Revere is following best practices, and I think it's just given us a sawate, given people, it's something to talk about, basically. I think this has given people to talk, something to talk about. But we know it, and I want the viewers to know it. We're doing, going, we're doing everything we can to make sure money that is spent is legitimate, and that everything, every department is in line.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Patch, anything? Counselor?
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to see the state auditor come in, but I got, I have past experience with audits. A couple of years ago, I, I put in for an audit, a motion in for an audit on CDM Smith, who I have questioned your practices for quite a while. And honestly, my colleagues backed us, and I went to the state auditor, and they said they had no money to do the audit. So, I don't know if we, what are you going to do? Send ten, ten audits? Do we have a request for ten audits or something? There was one that I thought had a good, a good reason for an audit, and they refused to do it. So, I'm not, I'm not putting my faith in the state audit. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Powers?
Thank you, Madam President. My understanding is currently there's an investigation going on with regard to parking meter receipts. And at some point, that investigation will conclude, and we'll know a lot more at that point than we know now. You know, every day we're out there telling people, you know, Revere's on the move, we're building new apartments, we're building condominiums, we've got hotels coming in. My daughter lives in Medford, and about two weeks ago, she said to me, "What the heck is going on in that city? What are they doing over there?" And I think what she inferred by that was, something's wrong in the city. Well, something may be wrong. I don't know that something is wrong, but something may be wrong. But the more we talk about the FBI and Department of Justice and all of these other agencies coming into the city to look in everybody's finances, and it implies that something serious is wrong. And what does that say to the person that wants to move here and make an investment? "I'm not going to live in Revere. They've got problems over there. They're all crooked, this and that and the other thing." So, the more we throw this out there, the more of a disservice we're doing to the people that live in this city, that work every day and pay out their taxes and help us to operate this city. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Rizzo.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I basically agree with what everyone's saying. I mean, nobody wants to sit up here and hear negative things about the city we live in. In my case, it's the city I live in, the city I work in. I don't leave the city. But I think we all have to remember how all of this came to be right now. In fact, I sat here in the City Council chambers maybe three or four times during the time I was mayor and the time I came back to City Council. I happened to be at the meeting when the mayor requested, this was back in April of 2016. No, it was April, April of 2016, because I, because I just happened to be here, requested an outside audit. And I remember Counselor Rotundo said, "Well, why is it we're using an outside firm? Why don't we use the state auditor?" And, and the mayor was insistent. He said, "No, no, we think there might be some things wrong." And I remember Counselor Rotundo, and by the way, I was up here not about the audit. I didn't even know there was anything about the audit. I just happened to be here, I think, because I had... I had donated some money to the scholarship fund for the kids. And so, the mayor made a statement, and by the way, I don't know if everybody knows this, we have an annual audit that's done, I don't know if he's still using Powers and Sullivan, or he went back to Melanson and Heath, or he's using somebody else, but we have an audit that's done every year anyway. This was a separate audit. And when Counsel Rotundo asked him, "Well, do you suspect 30B violations?", which is very egregious, he said, "Yeah, we do." Well, I mean, of course, you know, if anybody here, or anybody here, was being accused of 30B violations that people go to jail for, you're going to wake up a little bit and listen. And of course, I did. In fact, in the interest of full disclosure, I went out and got an attorney, because he had a headhunting firm, as far as I was looking at it, coming and looking for 30B violations, which I know wasn't the case. But you start thinking, like, what, you know, this is an outside auditor, handpicked by the mayor, I mean, am I going to have to get concerned about this? Well, now, lo and behold, the audit comes up, and there's no parking revenue receipts for 18 of 24 months. That's okay, we met here. The next day, I would imagine, prompted by a press release from the administration, it's in the Herald, it's in the Globe, and then we started getting phone calls. I didn't initiate one phone call to talk about the FBI, to talk about outside auditors, nothing. These calls came to me because of, because of relationships that I had with the press over my close to 20 years in government. And so, you know, I think for us to say, like, somehow, any of us, including Counsel Rotundo, whose motion this is, is trying to drag the city through the mud, I think it's unfair to him, and I think it's unfair, you know, and I think it's unfair to us. We're here, whether or not we want to admit it or say it, we are here for checks and balances. You have an executive branch, and you have a legislative branch, and that is what we sit on. We are the legislative branch of local municipal government. And if there's a problem which was identified the last meeting, at the meeting of July 23rd, then yeah, it probably should have been. But guess what? I don't think anybody on this city council notified the press after that meeting. I know I didn't. You know, it was in response to what was put out there. And so, so, so I'll say this, I want to be a team player, I want to work for the benefit of the city, you know, or for the benefit of our residents. I, you know, we want what's best for our residents, otherwise, we shouldn't be sitting here. We want what's best for our residents. I think Counsel Morbido said, "Yeah, you know what, yeah, politics does play in." Yeah, politics does play in. That's what, that's what our democracy is based on. It's based on elections, it's based on politics. And, you know, sometimes, unfortunately, it gets way too personal. But, you know, I sit with all of you and say, "I want what's best for this city." I do want what's best for this city. But I don't think that it's unfair, I mean, I'm sorry, I think it is a little unfair to, in the way that I'm interpreting this, and if I'm interpreting it wrong, I stand corrected, but I'm interpreting it as, well, maybe Counsel Rotundo's motion is somehow dragging us through the mud, and I just don't believe that's the case. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Point of information, Madam President?
Let Counsel Morbido speak first.
I just want to make it clear, by no means whatsoever did I have any intentions, or did I think Counsel Rotundo's motion's intent was to drag the city through the mud. Just, I just want to put that on record.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Counsel Rizzo. And absolutely, absolutely not. I don't, I don't think that that's anyone's intentions. I think that Counsel Rotundo, for many years, has had an extreme passion for the city that's been unmatched, and I appreciate his passion, and I appreciate your passion and the great things that you've done for the city. And I think that everyone up at this, in these chambers is doing a fantastic job, and they want to represent the city as well as they can. I do believe that we have to, as a body, be extremely careful and cautious of how we portray certain things. We don't do it intentionally, sometimes it comes out that way, and again, not because anyone called the press, or, I don't even know about that, I don't, no one calls me, I'm kind of the new guy, I don't get those calls. But the way that we behave in this chamber is seen in all the households on the other side of the TV, and then, yes, sometimes it gets picked up by a big paper. And when we, when we act in a certain way, or we make insinuations in a certain way, it gets taken, I think, in sometimes a negative light. And a lot of people go, "Oh, it's just Revere being Revere." And I think that's total, you know what. I think that these 11 people up here, I'd go to war with any one of you. And you all, we all, I think we all have the best interests of the city in our own hearts. And just, we just have to be careful of how we portray it, because I get it, there's two sides, and I get that we're going to have disagreements with the mayor's office, or a certain office, or whatever it may be. But when we start fighting, pitting neighbor against neighbor, I mean, John McCain just passed away, and he talked about that a lot, especially more recently with the current administration up in the, overseeing the country. Is when we start going left against right, front against back, whatever it may be, it just, it comes out ugly, and we don't have to be that way, we don't have to behave in that fashion. Simple as that. I love this city, I know you do, and this wasn't directed at any one person. I think that we all need to be very careful and cautious of how we represent our city when we're up here. That's what we can do. What happens on that side is on them. If they want to represent themselves in a certain way, shame on them too. Simple as that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Rotundo, then Counselor Guanasso, and then, again, guys, we got to wrap this up.
I want people to remember a word, shrinkage. And that word led to another word, theft. And that's why we have an investigation. And someone, a couple of weeks ago, used a quarter to hurt one of my friend's feelings to be wise about what happened with this process. I find that very disheartening. You know what I'm talking about, so many people up here know what I'm talking about. I'm sorry, I'm not going to tell you all what it's about. But, you know what? I hear those things too. Revere this, Revere that, been through it before too, with the state audit. The only way to shed that stigma is to put light on a problem. Now, we found a problem. 18 months out of 24, there was no income, there was no execution of law, none, only until May of 2018. Now we have an investigation that is 18 months too late. I really don't care if the Revere police are investigating this, because quite frankly, they're way behind the ball on this. And if they find somebody, God bless them. But knowing what I know right now, you know, they're better off trying to find Peter Pan. So, the issue here is, how do you improve government? How do you provide a clear and concise, deliberate message to the people that this city will not tolerate inefficiency? That we are going to make our government better by asking the state auditor to come in and do what they do best? We can ask them to come in and do it, and they will audit us, they will give us a price, and we can determine whether or not we're going to pay for it. We've paid at least $72,000 for a second audit and a review, which I don't know what that price is, might be incorporated, I don't know, upon the other audit that we had with Powers, with Powers and Sullivan. And a lot of what I've read in the audit that we have by this new company is pretty much what Melanson and Heath has said when Tom Ambrosino was in office. So, there are inherent cultural, structural issues within our government that need to be changed. And who better to change them? The state auditor. It's non-biased, it's not the mayor's person, it's not my person, it's the government, and they're the best at it.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Guanasso?
In the business community, Madam President, judged by bond ratings, and how you financially run your business, the City of Revere started off with the Hassan administration, the Ambrosino administration, the Rizzo administration, and now the Arigo administration. And the broad light should be shown upon the Boston media to show, can any other city and town surrounding the City of Revere match our bond rating? Sisters and brothers in Lynn had to borrow money, Everett had to borrow money, we're a solvent community. And this solvency didn't come in this past couple of years. It's been worked upon on the previous administrations down and maintained by the current administration. That's the light that we should shine upon the Boston media. It's sensationalism. Revere has been given the stigma of being a gangster city, and this and that. That is so far-fetched, it's unreal. And so, we should just go about our business and say, you know, people will think what they may. What's happening in our community is probably 10 times nicer and better than all the surrounding cities and towns around us. But we have the stigma, Revere, and unfortunately, we have to live with that. But one thing we can all be proud of is, when we go out and protect our future, the monies that we have to borrow to grow our city and make sure it's solvent is our bond rating. That's sacred. The financial, when you buy a stock, what's the first thing you do? Bitcoin and all those other stupid things that just come out. You look at the financials and say, "I want to make an investment in this because the financials are here." So, for City of Revere, the financials are in great position. Our bond rating is second to none. We almost have, we have the second-to-highest bond rating that they can offer. And so, we should be proud of that. Shine that light to the Boston Herald, and show them that, show our bond rating and how our business is run. You know, are there exceptions? Do things happen within, when people handling money? Of course they do, but that doesn't mean there's mass corruption, that doesn't mean that there's a mass, mass of a pit hole, that something's going astray, and we can't really protect our interests of our community. That's further than the truth, we can't even, you can't even talk that kind of talk. We are a solvent community, we all be proud of that. We work with the mayor. Do we agree with the mayor all the time? No. Do we agree with each other all the time? No. But our collective thoughts is a growing process for our city, and I think we should keep that going, because what we're doing in the past several years is working, working for our city. And our city is growing, and our city's growing, and financially, we're solvent. What better thing can you have? You know, and I know everybody talks about traffic. Wait in a couple of weeks when the beach is closed, I want you to see the traffic flow. It's a fallacy, where it's a regional city, the traffic that comes through is regional. So, anyway, Madam President, thank you, and I think that the spotlight should be shown upon our bond rating. And we should send a message to the Boston Globe, Boston Herald, and let them come in and ask us about, "How did you achieve such a high bond rating? It's because of hard work by previous administrations, this administration, and city councils." Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors have any questions? Before I open it up, any counselors? Counselor, last comment.
Thank you for your leeway. At the end of the day, this is not, in my opinion, an activity of saying that the city is doing something wrong. It's about making it better. That's it. It's about making the city better, plain and simple.
Thank you.
If I may, colleagues, I wasn't going to speak on this, but since everyone else did, might as well. So, I have some notes as to how this recommendation is amended, which we'll go over toward the end. Just my own personal comments, I wasn't going to speak on it, if it was just about the parking department, you know, I think it's important that when an issue is identified, that we handled it. However, my concern is when you put a blanket over the entire city. So, when you say the entire city, that talks about our police department, that's our fire department. Does that include our school system? Does that include the DPW that we just did this a couple of years? Where when we go into situations like that, it could get repetitive, it could get expensive, you know, there are departments that don't handle cash, that have budgets that are extremely small, that I don't think necessarily need to be audited by a larger organization than our annual audit. However, when there is an issue, I have no problem addressing that issue. But to put a blanket over the entire city, I don't think it's necessary. But if we were specific and identified areas of concern, I would, you know, be willing to look at that. However, I can't justify auditing our police department and our fire department, again, does it include the school department? Because that's a budget within itself, and our DPW that just went through this process. So, I have many concerns about that. However, you know, it's our job as the city council to work with the city and to, you know, protect the residents and make sure that when issues arise, we do our due diligence, we do everything that we can in this body to make sure that it's handled in an efficient and timely manner that respects the people that work here, the people that live here, and ourselves. So, I want to thank you all for your time and your input. I know that these meetings have not been easy, there have been a lot of points of contention, so hopefully, we can move forward and pass these. So, that's my comment, thank you. I'll open it up to anyone else.
Eric Lampadakio, 43 Tapley Avenue. In business, there's a term called opportunity cost. And this last audit really revealed a missed opportunity for our city. Well, 2.4, correct me, 2.4 or 2.2? 2.2 million dollars was found, 1.4 was returned back to the state. That's a missed opportunity for our city, and with that amount, I think that's enough to give leeway to having another set of eyes look at this city. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I'm going to read what I have as my notes, as how this is amended, and then Counselor, you can...
We can amend it just for the city side of government. I mean, period. The school committee is underneath, the state law is an entity unto itself.
What about police and fire and DPW and other?
That's city government, that's city government. If you want to do, want to be specific, Revere Police, Revere Fire, DPW, Mayor's Office, Council, the whole, everything, the auditor, the treasurer, every facet of government.
So, you're looking to revise it to say, to request that the mayor request the state auditor to investigate the...
Not to investigate, to audit.
All right, so I'm going off the original?
Yep, and what we can do is between...
So, request that the mayor request the state auditor to audit all city...
All departments within city government between 2012 to 2016, or from whatever date you wish to choose.
Okay. Madam Clerk, if you wouldn't mind reading back what you have, and then we'll open it up to the council.
Make that, excuse me, I stand corrected myself, 2014 to 2018.
What I have on record here, that the mayor request the state auditor to conduct a top-to-bottom review of each department in City Hall excluding the school department from 2014 to 2018.
Counselor Zambudo?
I'd like to amend that to the mayor ask the state auditor for an estimate of cost for this proposed audit. Thank you.
I agree wholeheartedly. Any other counselors?
Yep, throw a price tag on it, and then we can, I think we can get an educated vote.
Perfect. And I know that this is a lengthy conversation, but this has changed in nature so many times since it came before us, it's important that we get it straight.
Madam President, we can always put this in, you know, Ways and Means Committee, have it come back out so that we refine it.
I think it's like pulling off a Band-Aid, I think that we should just go forward, because we're just going to drag it out painfully longer. Any counselors? Roll call.
That the mayor request the state auditor for a cost estimate to conduct a top-to-bottom review of each department in City Hall excluding the school department from 2014 through 2018. Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Keefe?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Morbido?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Patch?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes. And Counsel President Gennito?
Yes.
All right, that moves us into the zoning subcommittee report from the meeting of August 13th. I know there are several items that remained in committee, Counselor. Do you want me to read the ones that I have on record that you're keeping in committee, and then you can speak on the ones that you wish to move forward? Are you listening, Counselor? Rotundo? Your committee report we're going to talk about now.
Oh, you're killing me.
There are several things that are remaining in committee, do you wish me to read those off first, and then you can talk about the ones that we sent you to vote out?
Yes, please.
All right. So, my notes have that calendar items 219, which is a...
And 231, to remain in committee.
219, 231 remain, and then we're going to discuss 38 and 39. Madam Clerk?
Calendar item number 13, Sunrise Development LLC, 12 Arbor Lane, Roslyn Heights, New York, seeking permission from the Revere City Council to reconstruct and extend a non-conforming structure for the purpose of constructing a 162-room hotel at 58 Revere Beach Boulevard.
Counsel Rotundo?
Madam President, this was spoken elaborately, and in fact, hopefully, these hotels will come as quick as possible, but at this point, we accepted it, and we all voted favorably with conditions noted. And that would be my recommendation to, again, vote favorably for this as well, with the conditions. Madam Clerk, do we have to read them into the...
Will we get them?
Please. Please.
These are the site plan review conditions for 58 Revere Beach Boulevard. One, the building design and materials plans shall be approved by the Revere Beach Design Review Board, and such recommendation, recommendations shall be incorporated into the final design plans to be submitted for final approval by the Site Plan Review Committee. Two, the Conservation Commission shall review this project under the Wetlands Protection Act and issue an order of conditions. The order of conditions shall be recorded in the Registry of Deeds and made part of the final site plan. Three, a landscaping plan shall be reviewed and approved by the RB, DRB, and Site Plan Review Committee for streetscape improvements along Revere Beach Boulevard and Ocean Avenue. Four, an ornamental street light, street lighting plan shall be approved by the RB, DRB, and DCR for street lighting improvements along the Ocean Avenue and Revere Beach Boulevard frontage of the site. Five, a new concrete sidewalk and driveways with granite curbing shall be installed along the Ocean Avenue frontage of the site. The Revere Beach Boulevard frontage shall include new concrete sidewalks with decorative pavers and granite curbing. Six, vehicular access and egress shall be provided by two driveways on Ocean Avenue. There shall be no vehicular access or egress driveways on Revere Beach Boulevard. Seven, the project proponent shall work in coordination with DCR to institute pedestrian safety measures, crosswalks, and curb ramps on Revere Beach Boulevard in front of the hotel. Eight, an exterior grease trap shall be installed for the proposed hotel-restaurant. Nine, the Ocean Avenue facade shall include architectural lighting and artwork to be approved by the RB, DRB, and Site Plan Review Committee. Ten, a sewer connection and water connection permit must be obtained from the DPW. In accordance with the current DEP Administrative Order and EPA Consent Decree, a sewer connection fee shall be paid to the city for 10 to 1 removal of inflow and infiltration from the sanitary sewer system. The formula for the sewer connection is based on 110 gallons per bedroom times 10 times $1.30 per gallon. Since the proposed development shall provide for a total of 162 hotel rooms, the INI fee shall be $231,660. This fee shall be paid in two installments, 50% to the, prior to the issuance of a building permit, and 50% prior to the issuance of an occupancy permit. Eleven, hydrant flow tests shall be conducted on Ocean Avenue to determine the adequacy of both domestic and fire flow and for the proper sizing of domestic and fire flow service lines to 58 Revere Beach Boulevard. Plans for the locations of additional hydrants shall be approved by the fire department. Twelve, the city engineer and DPW superintendent must review and approve utility plans for the proposed sewer service, water sorve, water service, and storm water management prior to the issuance of a building permit. Thirteen, all existing drains and sewer lines within the site shall be abandoned and shall be capped at the main and, and removed. Fourteen, the developer shall establish a transportation demand management program for the proposed hotel development at 58 Revere Beach Boulevard to be approved by Site Plan Review Committee and DCR. The TDM shall provide provisions for valet parking to accommodate the function space. And fifteen, in accordance with Chapter 17.47, the Community Improvement Trust Fund is applicable to this development project. Under the Community Improvement Trust Fund, the developer must contribute 3% of the cost of construction above and beyond what is allowed as of right towards the fund, which must be spent exclusively towards capital improvement projects within the impacted area. For the purpose of this special permit, 3% of the construction costs shall be based on the increased density of the project as a result of the FAR of six and parking relief, which dictates the number of allowed hotel rooms and function room space.
That's all?
I was just, thank you for God.
Counselor Novoselfsky.
Madam President, I best, I, I believe we spoke about a safety issue on Ocean Ave at the driveways to put on those emergency, uh-
A beacon, that's correct.
The warn, the warning beacons coming out of the driveways on, on Ocean Avenue.
That was one of the conditions that we asked for as a party.
I want to make sure that's included on it. Thank you.
So if there are no other questions in the council, I ask that this be taken up to a vote with the findings of site plan review and the city council. Madam Clerk?
Shall the city council grant the special permit relief to the applicant subject to the findings and conditions of site plan review and the city council? Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keefe?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Counselor President Janino?
Yes.
Yes, the special permit has been granted, subject to the findings and conditions of site plan review and the city council.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Calendar item number 14, this is a special permit for Robert Einello, 727 Revere Beach Parkway, seeking permission from the Revere City Council to reconstruct and modify a pre-existing non-conforming structure for the por, for the purpose of constructing a three-story building utilized for a self-storage use at 727 Revere Beach Parkway.
Counselor.
Thank you, Madam President. I believe this was also voted all favorably. I'm almost tempted not to ask the clerk to read the conditions. I'm just seeing, it's only four pages full, but Madam Clerk, if you could, I'd be grateful.
These are the conditions for site plan review for 727 Revere Beach Parkway. One, new concrete sidewalks with granite curbing shall be constructed along the full frontage of the property on Taft Street with four Chanticleer pear trees shall be planted within the sidewalk layout on Taft Street along the rear of the building. Two, there shall be no vehicular access or egress from the site onto Taft Street, and Taft Street shall not be used as service entrance to the building. Three, there shall, there shall be no outdoor storage of materials or equipment allowed on the site. Four, the final architectural and exterior building material plans shall be approved by the Site Plan Review Committee. Five, a parking lot layout and landscaping plan shall be approved by the Site Plan Review Committee. And six, in accordance with Chapter 17.47 of the revised zoning ordinances, this project is also subject to the Community Improvement Trust Fund.
Any councilors have any other questions? At that time, I asked the clerk to call the roll, subject to the conditions and findings of site plan review and the Revere City Council.
Shall the city council grant the special permit relief to the applicant, subject to the findings and conditions of site plan review and the city council? Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keefe?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, and Counselor President Janino?
Yes.
Yes, the special permit has been granted, subject to the findings and conditions of site plan review.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Calendar item number 18?
Yep. Calendar item number 18, communication from the mayor regarding ETP funds.
Any councilors have any questions on this?
Madam President.
Counselor.
Madam President, it's my understanding that the city council submitted a request for $22,000 to upgrade our communication here in the, in the chamber, and it's not on this list. And-
Can we amend this? You want to make a motion tonight, Ira?
I said the same thing. I, you know, I wanted to amend it, you know, that they add on the 22,000-
This has been about almost a year now.
For our, our, our request. And, you know, this is something, you know, I know everybody wants money from ETP, but, you know, we want to upgrade our council chamber. You know, and it's nice that we want to give the school department 135,000 and, you know, you know, parks and records, small money, but, but, you know, $22,000, you know, I'd like to recommend that we add it in anyway and, and make it happen, but I don't know if the proper procedure is that it has to come to the ETP committee.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Rotundo?
I believe it does have to come through the committee. You know, one of the things that we were all talking about is the betterment of the city. We have a billion-dollar project that's going to take place at Suffolk Downs. When these people come before us and they want to show us their project, and they want to elaborate on it using whatever electronic medium they wish, I, I would feel that having an upgraded system within City Hall, in particular in the council, would benefit not only the developer and us, but the function of government. So, Mr. Mayor, what do you, oh, if, if you do have a second, is there a way that you could expedite this?
While the mayor's coming up, I'll just give you guys a little backstory. We have some pretty bad issues in terms of communication in the council. Our microphones barely ever work. Many of you remember a meeting a couple of months ago where we actually had to bring a, it was the big system with the speaker and the microphones in. Counselor Morabito's microphone just broke as we speak. The electrical situation in here is also short of a hazard, so it's definitely something in the interest of being able to make our meetings public and ensure that every meeting held in this chamber has that ability.
Mr. Mayor?
Madam President, to answer a question, I think quickly, we have kind of undergone a little bit of a change in terms of the ETP process. We are now kind of electronically asking individuals and departments to make requests. And so my understanding is that that request from the council is in the queue for, for approval. And if you want to hold off until next meeting, that will be before you at the next meeting. So however, however we want to proceed, but that is in the queue, and it's just been a little bit of a, a different process that we're undertaking with the ETP committee.
Yeah, but let's, there's no need to hold this hostage. Let's vote it up, and then we'll do the ETP.
It will be before the council, the next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, everybody. On the motion?
Thank you.
All in favor? Oh, roll call.
Shall the city council approve the ETP funds as, the expenditure of the ETP funds as reported by the ETP committee? Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keefe?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, and Counselor President Janino?
Yes.
Yes, the expenditure of those ETP funds has been approved. Onto motions. Calendar item number 19, motion presented by Counselor Rotundo, that the mayor restore the two employees on administrative leave without pay to be paid to include retroactive pay until the outcome of the AG's investigation. Likewise, that a complete audit on the process of collection and deposit by the Inspector General's office.
Madam President, unfortunately, the last part, my fault, is obviously a typo from another message. So if we could strike that part of the motion, I'd be grateful. But at this point, you know, historically, and speaking with many people, I just can't in good faith sit here without saying something that everybody talks about being innocent until proven guilty. When you take away someone's livelihood and you're not convicting them of a crime, that's basically saying that you've committed the crime. So at this point, that's why I'm asking, and we have no control over this, but until they're found guilty, they're innocent, if I'm not mistaken. That's, that's how I remember it in civics. And stopping someone's pay is the equivalent of saying you're guilty. My two cents.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other councilors?
Madam President?
Counselor.
I'm, I'm on both sides of this, you know. The, the gentlemen that are involved are dear friends of mine, and I know where the, the mayor is coming from, and it's being, you know, it's being investigated, and, you know, hopefully, you know, they'll be found that nothing happened, and they'll get them back pay, back to them. And, you know, I, I just hate, hate to be in this position, you know, doing this. And, you know, I don't, I don't know if we can, you know, I think we should wait until the investigation is over, and, you know, and it hurts me to say that, but, you know, I think we ought to wait and see what happens before we start telling the mayor what to do, you know, in a case like this. You know, investigation is investigation, and I know it's hard for everybody to swallow, and I just, I just hate to do this, and, you know, just wait and see what happens. Thank you.
Counselor Keefe?
Madam President, I agree with Counselor Novoselfsky. One, it's a very difficult position here. That's why I'm glad I'm not the mayor and I'm not in charge of the city. I, I feel very, very badly for the people that this has affected, and I hope that the outcome is positive. I, I know that, I've talked to people in the industry that have had, you know, employees suspended without pay. You know, it's, it happened in the city of Everett recently with some DPW employees, and they were fully retroed when they were found to be not at fault and not involved. And I, I, I would hope that that's the same case here. And, you know, it just, like Counselor Novoselfsky said, we really, we can vote whatever we want today. It's gotten, it will have no impact on the decision of, of the mayor. I can guarantee that. So it really, it's, it's, it's not really city council business, in my opinion, but, and I hope that everything works out. But I just think that if there is, if there's an investigation going on, how uncomfortable would it be for that person to be put back into the position during this whole period and the employees that they're working with? So I'm just not necessarily sure that this is really for us to decide, and I can tell you that it's not for us to decide, but that's just my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Zambudo?
Thank you, Madam President. My biggest beef with this whole situation was that I felt that I disagreed with the mayor with the leave without pay, and I, I thought it should have been leave with pay. As my colleague to my right said, we have absolutely no control over what the mayor does in this instance, and except to say that I disagreed with him, and I did. So, I mean, we could vote this motion, and, and he'll just veto it or not, act on it, and, and that's it. I mean, he's made an executive decision to do something I disagree with, and, but it is what it is. So, I, you know, I, I hate to call my colleague to my right to say this motion is irrelevant, but it truly is. Thank you.
Counselor Patch?
Thank you, Madam President. I said the, the, when it was first brought before us, that I thought it was not right for the, the people involved to be suspended without pay, and I still believe that to be true. They also a matter of health insurance and other issues, and I just could request that the mayor reconsider, and, and until there's an indictment or a complaint filed in the court, I believe that they should be being paid. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Rotundo?
The other part of the equation, contrary to what people think, is that there's a legal part of this that leaves us somewhat open under label law. And you can have 100 attorneys come up here and say that, but I'm sure that we can get 100 more to say the opposite. But at the end of the day, when it comes down to somebody's kids, you know, not having healthcare because there's a suspicion but no proof, that's an issue to me. And so it is irrelevant. You're right, Tony, there's no question about it, but I can't sit here in good conscience without raising my voice. That's all this is.
Thank you, Counselor. If I may, briefly, I agree with my colleague Counselor Keefe's commentary earlier. The only issue I have with this is the wording. I know as a city councilor, I wouldn't want someone telling me what to do, so I think that the wording is kind of rude. If anything, we can request that the mayor restore the two positions, so I'd make that as a friendly amendment. I just, I just-
Whatever nuance you wish to put in, I'm fine with.
Yeah, and, and again, as my colleague said, the, the reality of it is, this vote really has no bearing on the decision and what's happening. It's happening, motion, things are in motion. The City Council has no control over that. And it's, I don't believe it's Council business or the place of the City Council to deal with this. As Councilor Keefe mentioned, in a similar city where a situation happened, if the person in Everett was found not at fault, they were reimbursed for any lost wages. And, you know, that's up to the people that are investigating this and their attorneys to deal with, not this body. That's my thought. Councilor, would you just go to committee or to vote on it?
You know, Madam Council, Madam President, you can vote on it. I will tell you past practices here in the city from my recollection. We know the case in particular. They were given pay while they were on administrative leave. The FBI and the state auditor was involved in that case, too. This is against past practices, it's my concern. But we can do whatever you want.
Councilor?
Madam President, this puts us in a very awkward position of casting judgment of something we know little of. We don't know any of the facts on both sides. And in fact, the mayor took a position, and I spoke with him today about it. And that's his prerogative. He has a right to do that. But in the same token, we don't know much about the case. And I really like to see the judicial process work its place out before we cast a judgment. And before we take money away from somebody, I think that judgment has to be pretty clear that there's a probable cause. And with the probable cause, then you can make your assertions. But I don't want to play judge advocate up here. I don't want that to be on my conscience. And let me just state it out very clearly. I'm very friendly with one of the individuals. The other individual I have, I don't know him if I walked by him. But I am very friendly with one of the individuals. It's like asking me to cast an aspersion against somebody I know. I don't know if he did it, or I don't know if he didn't do it. That's not my job, and thankfully it isn't. But I know when I have to come up here and make a judgment, well, they're taking away insurance, they're taking away, all that will take its course when, in fact, the judicial process works itself out, then that will take its course. And that's why I find making and casting a judgment up here on this particular case is very difficult. It's a difficult position for all of us.
Madam President, I have no problem withdrawing it. I will withdraw the motion. I'll leave this one point to every counselor up here. Judgment has been made. Money has been taken away. Guilt has been levied by that action alone, even though the judicial system hasn't come through yet. So that being said, that's why people are put on administrative leave with pay. But I will withdraw this. Thank you.
So this is withdrawn, but I'll allow Councilor Zambudo's comment.
I guess, you know, I'm glad it's withdrawn. However, I would ask for some compassion, and if there was, the mayor could find it in his heart to continue the insurance, I would.
With two kids.
I would find that to be a, at least a halfway measure, maybe. But again, it's completely his decision, it's an executive decision. But I would ask for some compassion in that regard to insurance. Because we know you can always get the money back if you're found not responsible. But I don't know that you can, you know, if someone gets sick and someone needs, a kid needs help or whatever, I don't know if you can get reimbursed for the insurance. So anyways, that's neither here nor there. That's just a, I throw that out there, and if someone wants to grab it, that would be nice.
Motion's withdrawn.
Calendar item number 20, motion presented by Councilor Rotundo, that the mayor request the state auditor and the FBI to investigate the parking department and to explain why parking meter revenue losses of 2017 were not reported to law enforcement at that time.
So Councilor, the City Council already voted this evening on the audit in the entire city, so I see it as repetitive. Your thought, to withdraw or place on file? Pick one.
Place on file.
Place on file.
Calendar item number 21, motion presented by Councilor Rotundo, that the mayor request the city solicitor under the auspices of the mayor to hire an outside agency to revamp the city's parking meters with kiosks and establish standard operational controls.
Councilor?
If this is not already in place, then we'll withdraw it as the mayor's saying it's already in place.
Point of information, yeah, I put forward a motion to implement a smart meter parking program about a year and a half ago, and the mayor implemented in the summer. So, and the operations is part of the audit.
Madam President, may I ask the mayor a question?
Sure.
Mr. Mayor, how long do you think it would take for this whole city to come up to par with a new meter system? And what's the general cost off the top of your head? If you don't have it, not to worry.
So we have already been in the process of procuring the new meters. We expect them to be in by the end of the year, by the end of this calendar year.
And how many meters are we going to be procuring?
All of them.
So 273?
We're replacing every meter.
Excellent. Relative cost?
The cost structure, we're working out with the vendor. We have, like many other communities, under MAPC can go through a bidding process, procurement process that may allow for the city to not even have to pay an upfront cost. So that's, we're looking for every option.
Very well. If you can email me or whatever when you get a second, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Anyone else? On the motion, all in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 22, motion presented by councilors Morabito, Guanasso, McKenna, and Keefe, that the mayor request community development to extend the decorative lighting for the entire length of Broadway. Currently, the decorative lights only go from Beach Street to Revere Street.
Thank you. Before we take up this motion, I also want to acknowledge another elected official that's in this room, School Committee Woman Carol Ty. This time, I'll open it up to Counselor, we'll just go in order, Counselor Morabito, followed by Guanasso and McKenna and Keefe.
Thank you, Madam President. Considering this is a motion that has to do with beautification, let me just applaud the Beachmont Improvement Committee and the Revere Beautification Committee who are here tonight. So thank you for all your past efforts, your current efforts in beautifying the city. I just want to put, I put in this motion because a resident brought to my attention that going along Broadway, you have all this nice decorative lighting that really beautifies our downtown area. But when you get to toward Chelsea or toward the Rotary, which is really the entry point of our city, there's no decorative lamps. So I would, I worked with my colleagues, and we thought it was a good motion to put forward to help enhance and beautify the city. So I hope my colleagues will vote in favor of this.
Any other councilors on the motion that want to speak? Councilor Guanasso?
Madam President, the decorative decorations for the holidays is second to none. And I think that the rest of Broadway deserves the same as Broadway. So we make neighbors feel welcomed. And I think that this is a good motion to continue on Broadway and let the neighbors down the other end of Broadway realize that they're part of the community also. And it's a major, major street in our community. Thank you, Madam President.
Anybody else? Counselor?
I applaud my colleagues for this motion. It's absolutely, I don't know how many people have asked me why they haven't been. And I thought I was telling them the truth, and I said that they will be coming. But I just assumed they were coming, but this makes it for sure. So again, I applaud the makers of the motion.
Anybody else?
If I may briefly, I think it's a great motion. And I think the best part of this is, and I know one of my favorite things about driving down Broadway is when you see all the American flags on all the light posts. So I think if we can extend that further, I would look forward to seeing that, because it's really a great thing to drive into the city and our main corridor and see all those flags. And I know a lot of people love that. So great motion. On the motion, all in favor?
All opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 23, motion presented by Councilor Morabito, that the mayor request Mastot to investigate the feasibility of relowing a U-turn on North Shore Road between Sharmont Street and Revere Street for traffic traveling northbound on Route 1A. Residents traveling to their homes in the Lower Ward 5 neighborhood must wait in severely congested Revere Street traffic. Further, this would help alleviate the traffic in the Revere Street area by not forcing certain traffic northbound. Councilor Zambudo is recused from this motion.
Counselor Morabito?
Thank you, Madam President.
You're on a roll tonight.
On a roll. I'm always on a roll. God. So let me just state that there, the city currently is conducting a traffic study, which will hopefully come up with a better solution to the traffic congestion in that area. So what I've noticed is, I've actually went down there and surveyed the area myself, like I have nothing better to do. But, so what I noticed during the peak hours of 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., what happens is, traffic backs up from Butler Circle all the way to Revere Street. So when you enter Butler Circle, there's two lanes on that main road, North Shore Road and 1A North. So if you, if a driver inadvertently takes the wrong turn or doesn't go around the Rotary, they're forced to go northbound. They cannot do any U-turns. They're, at one point, you were able to do U-turns. So there's actually three cuts in the road from Butler Circle to Revere Street. But unfortunately, there are signs that prohibit U-turns. What I think happens right now is, if you're, if anyone living in the Revere Street area, Sagamore Street area, or anyone who inadvertently made a mistake and is forced to go northbound, and then they have to go, if they're going toward Revere Street, there's a left lane only lane. So what happens is, everyone goes, so the two lanes split into three lanes. So you can either go left to Revere Street, continue northbound on 1A, or you can take a right to Ocean Ave. Unfortunately, the people who inadvertently make that mistake and want to go, have to go northbound. So it's adding to that, it's contributing to that traffic congestion. The people who live in the Revere Street area, they're forced to go in the left lane. So what happens is, what I noticed going down there, the light, traffic light only turns green for 30 seconds. So what happens is, that whole left lane gets congested, because it only allows seven to nine cars through the green light. Now, that's if someone's going slowly or passes, if that's if someone's going, passing a yellow light. But it's more on the seven to eight side, seven to eight vehicles. So what happens is, it basically backs up and transitions to two lanes, the two main, two lanes on the main road, and makes it one lane. So it backs it up all the way to Butler. And I really think this would be a temporary fix to the backup at Butler Circle.
Counselor Morabito, thank you so much for your detailed traffic report. Any other councilors have any comments on this? Counselor Rotundo?
Madam President?
Oh, the Ward Counselor, sorry. Counselor Powers and then Counselor Rotundo. Good catch.
Thank you, Madam President. This was discussed when they redid that entire area down there, particularly in the northbound lane. And the problem is, the traffic is very high speed coming from the lights on Revere Street. And back when this was open and allowed, there were several numerous accidents down in that area. Right now, the city of Revere, along with Mastot, DCR, is doing, and Vanessa Associates, the traffic consultants, we've had several meetings with them. And right now, they are going to be reporting back to the city with a plan for that area. This very well could be something they would allow, okay? And it'd be good for myself, because I'm one of the people that has to go up to that light all the time and wait for the light to change on Revere Street, go up Revere Street and come down Sagamore Street. But it's, I don't, I don't mind doing it. It's something that I think helps the public safety down there with regard to that. So we'll just see what happens once we get the traffic report back. This might be something they include. Thank you.
Thank you, Ward 5 Counselor Powers. Counselor Rotundo?
Thank you. Steve, I agree with you in the wanting to use that. But I can tell you, you know, and I'm sure you drive it as much as I do, I think someone's going to get killed if we put that in. I really do. I mean, you've got, I've just, unfortunately, I've seen someone almost get clipped twice in the past six months. Someone just speeding down from the other side and the person not negotiating it appropriately. I think also it might cause that problem. Personally, like, you know, two of my kids' friends live right around the corner, so it makes it easier for me to make the turn. And I'd love it. It's convenience to me. I'm concerned about it. That's my only detraction.
So obviously, I don't want anyone to get hurt.
Right, we agree.
That's the last thing we, anyone wants. But as Councilor Rizzo mentioned earlier, you know, everyone complains about traffic. They do. This would obviously, we have no jurisdiction over this. We can make suggestions. A study is currently in place. That's why this motion is just to recommend it.
Okay.
And see what this, what DOT, how they feel about making a U-turn there.
So one of the things that I'm thinking is that, as you and I know the area, people are going to use that as a cut through to drive up that street. There's three stop signs, they're there for, and I believe when Counselor Powers put them in several years back, was because they were using that area as a cut through. In fact, they were constructing one of the houses over on Sagamore Street at that time. But with that said, I also support you in the recommendation. I just want to give you my misgivings on, you know, that part of it. So if it's a recommendation to see feasibility, I'm 100% with you. I never have a problem with feasibility.
So I know that other councilors have some commentary on this. Since there's so much conversation, I think that we should put this into public safety and also the Traffic Commission, so that the Traffic Commission can look into it simultaneously with the City Council's own Public Safety Committee. We can ask some experts from the city to talk about it. We can get any information we need and let the Traffic Commission deal with it as well.
Why don't we make a statement for Stephen?
Huh? Yeah, that's why I'm saying we should send it to the Traffic Commission and Public Safety.
Madam President, if I may, this is more of a temporary fix. We have a concrete study going on, but at least we can get some kind of recommendation if we approve it.
So Counselor Novoselfsky is also recommending to refer it to the consultant. So we would put it into the City Council's Public Safety Committee, the City of Revere's Traffic Commission, and also refer it to the traffic consultant that's working on this project. Am I missing anything? Ward 5 Counselor?
Thank you, Madam President. That was going to be my suggestion, put it into the Traffic Commission's, currently. And Counselor Rotundo makes a good point. Allowing more traffic to take that left-hand turn going down and up over the hill on the Sagamore Street, that does cause problems for the neighborhood. On the other hand, with more traffic racing up Sagamore Street and to beat the light on Revere Street. So it's, you know, six of one and a half a dozen of the other. Thank you.
Madam President, once again, the motion is to.
Counselor, we're going to put this in committee. We've been going back and forth multiple times.
I just wanted to state something. I just want a point of information, because.
Sure.
It's not a left turn. I'm asking that the DOT relays a U-turn, not a left turn.
All right, we'll talk about the left turn and the U-turn. And any other turns you want to make in committee? Thank you, Counselor. Any other councilors wishing to speak? Anyone else wishing to speak? And again, this will be going to the several places. It's going to go to the consultants, the Traffic Commission, and the Public Safety Committee.
Pat Mulcahy on Sagamore Street. So you just changed your mind? You don't want to make it a left turn? Because what Powers and Judge said is the concern. Because it used to be a legal turn. And when it was a legal turn, my concern was the safety, like Judge said, the cars that are coming back down. Even when I could take the turn, I really didn't want it, because it was, because they come really fast. And it really is a safety issue. And like John and Judge said, the cut through, then they go up Sagamore Street, it just turns out to be a cut through all the traffic. It ends up being, even though it's convenient for us who live there, it turns out to be a safety issue and more of a pain in the neck, because everybody uses it as a cut through. So as much as it's convenient, it's really, it's more against it than for it. I'd rather, like John, just go up the street and wait for the light because of safety and the congestion it makes on the side streets. Because if you made it just for butters, wouldn't that be nice? But it would never be that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I just want to respond.
Counselor, we can talk about it in committee.
Just, I just want to make a point. Nicholas Malaysian, I live on 143 Lanton Road, but I work 12 hours a day at the corner of Revere Street and North Shore Road and the used car dealership. The last five or six weeks, granted, the traffic is crazy from 4:00 to 7:00. But the telephone pole construction, they work until sometimes 6:00, 7:00 o'clock at night, does not help. So I think once that's done, it's not going to solve the problem, but I think it'll make it a little better. I think that's what's causing a lot of the traffic the last five or six weeks, because they're stopping traffic, sometimes stopping traffic even from turning onto Revere Street towards Ocean Ave, just depending on what they're doing that day. So I think that's part of the problem. Thank you.
Counselor Morabito?
Thank you. I appreciate all the feedback. I'm not an expert in this field. I'm not a road survey air. That's why this motion is going to, just a suggestion, recommendation, something I observed sitting down there for like about an hour, so.
Thank you, Counselor. This will be going to the Traffic Commission, the Public Safety Subcommittee, and the consultants.
Calendar item number 24, motion presented by councilors Janino and McKenna, that the mayor request the DPW to investigate the feasibility of using a more visible paint color for crosswalks. The Revere Beautification Committee and Beachmont Improvement Committee would like to see a brighter color such as red to draw more attention to the crosswalks.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This is something that Counselor, Vice President McKenna and I put before the council on behalf of the Beachmont Improvement Committee, which Counselor McKenna is a member of as well, and the Beautification Committee. If it's okay with the council, maybe we should let them speak first, and then we can open it up to the council. So we'll open it up to you guys, since it was brought upon by the Beautification Committee and the BIC. So if any members are here that wish to speak, we'll open it up to you, and then the council will speak on it. Yep. The wait is over.
I'll be very brief. Thank you, Madam President and Counselor McKenna, for making this motion for us. I'm Kathleen Heiser, 51 Endicott Avenue, Revere, and I'm here representing the Beachmont Improvement Committee. So one of the things that we have done is, we're trying as a nonprofit So one of the things that we have done is we're trying as a nonprofit to get together with the River Beautification Committee, so the two, B I C and R B C. I get confused all the time. But we're working together to do this. So we've noticed that because when you pull up to a stop sign area, oftentimes, you don't know it's there. Cars are parked on the side and you go right up to it. So on the roads that I frequent a lot, and today I just happened to notice as I came up Harris Street towards 16, there's two stop signs there that you don't really see until you're just about, you don't know where you're supposed to stop. And on Dolphin Avenue by Liston Towers, there's two stop signs right there and the same thing. These are just ones that I've observed. And also on Leverett Avenue, as you come into Endicott Avenue, the same thing. And so my thought was originally, when I was thinking about doing this, is that if you saw color there in the crosswalk, even from half a block away, you would know that there's something to alert you and that you would slow down. So it would be a traffic calming technique as well as a safety issue. And that perhaps even if we could get this, if we could get all of your support, that we could do this painting. And there's lots of cities that are already doing it. I think Lynn is yellow and Winthrop is blue and Saugus is red. And maybe that after it gets done, we could have some kind of an educational component so that the citizens can know they should cross at the crosswalk. Thank you very much.
And a member from Beautification Committee? Anyone else wishing to speak on it before I open it up to the vice? Ron?
Well, I wasn't planning on talking this evening, but I totally agree. I was down at New Hall and Malden Street today, and there's a crosswalk that's like angled, and this woman with a young child was trying to cross, and guys went right by her and nobody even, you know, even bothered to let her cross. So it's common sense, and I think this is a great idea. I don't know what color, whatever color you want, that would make sense for the city, but I think it's an obvious need in the city. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm going to open it up to Counsel Vice President McKenna, who is one of the co-makers of the motion, and then the council, and I'll go last.
Thank you, Madam President. So one of the things, I agree with this because our crosswalks are faded, but I think when we sat and talked with Paul Argenzio, he did say that the color would matter when it gets dark. And he did say that red might not be the best color to put on a crosswalk if it's black, if it's dark out, because you won't see it. So I think you need, we need to research a color that's going to be bright enough to see in the dark hours of the night. So a white and a yellow, or a white and a light blue, or something like that.
If we could, this is where the Beautification Committee and the Beachmont Improvement Committee disagree. I think that it should be that lime green that they have for all of, on all of the pedestrian signs. I think that would show up. She likes red.
I like red, but I don't care. But what I was going to say, what I wanted to say is that I think that you could make whatever color more visible if you outlined it with a reflective white. And so put the lines back in, have a color, white lines, because I think no matter what color in the dark, you're not going to really have it pop out at you.
My colleague to my right just said that there are reflective colors out there for nighttime, reflective paint. So maybe we need to research a little bit better and see what's the best approach to this, and we'll go from there.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Counselor Rizzo, followed by Counselor Rotundo?
Yeah, I, thank you very much, Madam President. I was just going to mention that, you know, there are reflective colors, reflective paints, and, you know, the main thing to me is, the main thing to me is for the safety reasons, which is why we have these anyway. I'd like to see more money spent. I mean, whatever color would work is okay, as long as it's, you know, in the best interest of public safety. But I'd like to see more frequent, instead of, I don't know what the normal, and I don't see Paul Argenzio here, but instead of once a year or twice a year, maybe bump it up to three times a year, because there's so many areas in the city, I mean, I'm just thinking right here on Broadway, where, you know, you come down to Central Ave and people don't know, because the paint is all coming off now, you can't use that left lane to go straight. So it's creating a little bit of a problem. I think just by keeping it fresh, maybe allocating a little more money in that particular subaccount to do painting more frequently would be helpful, would make it look nicer for sure, and it would also make it safer because it would be fresh all the time and people could see, distinguish the sidewalks and distinguish the turn signals. That's all I have to say, Madam President.
Good point. Counselor Rotundo?
Thank you. I love the idea. I really do. Maybe not the lime, maybe not the red, but we'll figure out a color. And one of the things that I wanted to pass on to you all is, in my travels in particular to Barcelona, they would actually put little murals on the sidewalks leading into the beach. And what a better thing to do, going to, you know, a school, you know, kids carrying books on the, you know, on the crosswalk, so to speak, where people visibly see it, it's an indicator, the kids see it, it's a lot, you know, more comforting, so to speak. Or having something, you know, of the ocean going across from one part of, you know, Ocean Avenue to the beach and so forth. And maybe do it at different parts of the year, because as you know, it's probably going to get worn down in the cost. But at the end, at the end of the day, people can obviously adopt a sidewalk, you know, a crossing and so forth. Just some food for thought.
Counselor Zambudo.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm certainly in favor of painting whatever colors the beautification wants. However, I will, with a word of caution, there is a specific, a very specific type of paint for crosswalks. It's not just colors. It has to be the safety paint that's not slick. You can paint crosswalks with regular paint and get people killed. So there's only specific paint that can be used in a crosswalk. And I don't want, you know, even if we're going to repaint it every couple of months, it's got to be the correct paint. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Couple more counselors. Counselor Patch?
Thank you, Madam President. Actually, we, we were discussing up in the North River Neighborhood Group meeting what to do with the crosswalk at the New Harmon Playground. I mentioned that the, for the first time in Saugus, going down Exeter, I think it's Exeter, Essex Street, if you go to Clifton Deal and you take, you go to the left to Route One. And they painted it red. And it really, it really stands out. A member of the group said that the red was Saugus's color, you know, so we'd have to maybe do blue. So I, but it does, it does really have an effect on you, the color being in the middle. Definitely does. Thank you.
Counselor Grasso.
Very simple, Madam President. I'd be very happy to see the faded sidewalk, crosswalks painted white. Just get them illuminated white. But we have quite a few that are faded and in need of a quick paint job. So rather than worrying about what color, let's get them painted so illumination can be seen and drivers can see what's going on.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Morbido.
Thank you. You know, all this talk back and forth about colors, maintaining the lines, I think it's a great motion, but as we're moving to smarter technology, they do have LED smart crosswalks. So they actually change to environments. So that's something to look into in the future as we are moving to new technology.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Madam President, very quickly, a couple of things. One, the City Council approved our request for additional money for crosswalks. There were additional $65,000, I think that we had requested in our capital budget for this very purpose. So we do have the money. The fact is that the, the crosswalks and the markings on the street have been historically done with plain paint. Our latest bid that we put out for markings has included some newer technology that includes some plasma, I believe, in the paint that will last hopefully for a longer period of time. So rather than doing it two or three times each year, we do it once for a couple of years and we're good. Third is that in terms of enhanced design or colors, we are working with a group called Neighborways in both the Shirley Ave area and the Beachmont area to bring some public art to our pedestrian walkways and to certain areas in the, in those neighborhoods. And it's something that also gets our neighbors and gets neighbors talking to each other and thinking about how to bring some public art to their neighborhood. And those are certainly things that we're looking into. And I think aside from looking good, they also hopefully quell the traffic. So we're on it and, and I look forward to making sure that our markings are clean and crisp and last for a couple of years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I may briefly, I waited patiently. I think we should send this to Public Safety so we can go into it a little bit more in detail and maybe get that other group that the mayor mentioned to come before us, because I was not even aware of that project. So I think that could be something really interesting and add some value to the conversation. And I'm glad that my colleague Counselor Zambudo brought up the paint, because when I discussed this at home with Sergeant Janino, he brought that up and said, you have to make sure you have to use the right paint, because it could definitely cause accidents. And I believe there was an issue of several years back where there were cars sliding like an ice skate. So we'll make sure that won't happen again. Yes?
Just one more quick point. Ralph DeChico, River Commission of Disabilities. One thing when you're looking at color too, there's certain people with certain disabilities that have, certain colors affect them. So that's one thing you have to take into consideration when you're doing colors. I don't think a lot of these other cities took that into account when they did the reds or the lime greens. So that's something that you have to look into.
So noted. Great point. This will go to Public Safety.
Calendar item number 25, motion presented by Counselor Rotundo, that the mayor provide the City Council with a line item of each account to include name, dollar amount found, and date commissioned for the accounts in which the audit yielded $2.2 million.
Counselor Rotundo?
Just a simple thing. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Speaks for itself?
Yep.
Anybody else? On the motion, all in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 26, motion presented by Counselor Keith, that the City Council recognize the 2018 River Youth Baseball Championship teams and coaches for their tremendous accomplishments. The Minor League Nationals, Sergio Reyes is the coach, AAA Champion Angels Doug Goodwin and team, and Major League Cardinals Carlos Svensson and team.
Great motion. Counselor Keith, any comments?
Sure. Just, we'll have these, these teams up here, I believe, on the 24th of August. So, sorry, pardon me.
We might have missed that.
Next, September 24th. We've already notified some of these teams, so hopefully the council can be here and be present. We'll do a little pizza for them. And we just wanted to make one note that Carl Svensson's not allowed to bring the trophy here at night, because he happened to beat my team.
So noted. Anybody else? On the motion, all in favor? All opposed? So ordered. We have some late motions?
Late motions. Calendar item number 27, motion presented by Counselor Powers, that the mayor request the DPW to replace or repair the footbridge at the end of Sears Street. This bridge allows residents of the Bay Road area to, of the Bay Road area to the ballfield and River Beach Boulevard.
Counselor Powers?
Thank you, Madam President. This historic, this bridge historically has been an access for the people that live down on Lawrence Road, Leonard Road, Sears Street, Bay Road, and all of the streets down there to get over to the beach, to get up to Bianchi's to get a slice of pizza, or even to walk their dog in the field there, or get over to the ballfield. And I was down there about two weeks ago and I noticed that the bridge is sagging badly. The boards are coming up and I can see, you know, a tragedy happening down there if it's not repaired. So we had the bridge closed off for the time being, so it's not accessible. And I'm sure that if we get our carpentry department down there or get a carpenter, it can be done very quickly and at little expense, other than depending on if they have to rebuild the bridge itself. So the main thing is to, you know, the warm weather's here, the fall is coming, people access that bridge from the area, and I would like to get that done as quickly as possible. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors? Anybody else?
Eric Lampadakio, 43 Tapley Avenue. That bridge is in awful condition and has been for a long time. I submitted a 311 ticket, ticket number 2098, on September 12th, 2017, and the DPW responded in April and said that the bridge was repaired, and that is not the case. So I'd like that investigated as to why that was marked completed if it has not been done. Thank you.
Madam President, they did make some minor repairs to the bridge, but they, in my opinion, and I'm not a carpenter, but my opinion, they were not adequate to sustain the foot traffic over that bridge for any long period of time. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. On the motion, all in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
Late motion presented by Counselor Rizzo, that the mayor direct the Director of Inspeccional Services to appear before the City Council to discuss policies and procedures pertaining to the city's ongoing and future efforts to combat rat infestation. Counselor Rizzo?
Thank you very much, Madam President. This was actually put in as a late motion as a response to a complaint that I received from one of our residents. And I'm still unclear, because I know we had money that was originally budgeted to go out and combat the problem that we're having with rats. And then we subsequently budgeted another $150,000 that I'm told is now in the bid process. So it's kind of in limbo now. They've run out of the money that was originally budgeted and now waiting for bids to come in. But the problem is, in this one particular case, and the reason, this is the reason that I want to have the Director of Inspeccional Services come up, because I really don't know the answer to this. This resident was told by the exterminating company that the city would pay to have them come out and put out the traps. But then it was up to the resident to sign on for $90 a month and have, if they wanted the traps removed. So now apparently they're having issues and anyone coming to pick up the traps or kind of finish the process. So I, I'm really unclear on what to tell this one resident, and apparently they've got a neighbor that they say is having the same issue. So I think it would be good for all of us if we heard from the Director of Inspeccional Services how this is going to work, not only now, but going forward, once those bids are in. And hopefully the city gets the necessary help to the residents that are having these problems with rats. We just had a resident right here, up on Prospect Ave, beautiful home, beautiful, you couldn't ask for a more beautiful piece of property. Come to find out, his whole home is infested underneath, because it's up on a hill type of thing, and he's infested with rats. So, you know, there, it is an issue. We've budgeted money. I know the bid, the bids are in process, from what I'm told. But I just think it would be good for us to know, to tell the residents, you know, what to expect. Are they going to put the traps and then come back and get the traps? Are they going to be forced to, you know, sign on to some sort of a contract? Because a lot of people just simply can't afford that. And we have to be able to tell them that. If that is in fact going to be the case, we've got to let them know so that they're not stuck having to get into a contract just to get these traps removed. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Madam President, just one question. What was the name of that contractor? Because there were, so the city had four contractors that we worked with. We are going to have, the $150,000 will be two of those contractors we figure we can, we can select. And by no means will any resident need to sign on to a monthly plan or anything like that. So that is not the case. I want to make that very clear.
Yep. Okay, so this contractor is page exterminator. So, you know, again, this was sent to me by email and, you know, as I say, I don't know what the process is. I don't know if that's the way it goes or...
That is not the way it goes.
Okay.
So the, the way it will go is we will continue to have the waivers that allow for people to, if they're having a problem, to have a trap set. We're going to include, so there'll be an extermination piece and then a dry ice piece. So the idea is that hopefully the dry ice will prevent the rats from mating and the extermination will, will actually... and the extermination will actually kill them. What we plan to do, and as you said, it's out to bid, my expectation is that we will have bids and we will begin phase two, what we're calling phase two of the rat program in the next couple of weeks. So that has been put out to bid. We've gotten replies back. And we can expedite the process based on state laws. So this is obviously something that we're taking very seriously and we're looking to continue the program that we've put in place that I think had some positive impact. And with something that we actually heard from some of the contractors that said that many communities, barely any communities, do what we have asked those contractors to do. So we're going to continue that. We're going to make sure that we continue the efforts that we've started.
Thank you. I'm going to start this way and open up to any Councillors. So Counselor Keefe?
Thank you, Madam President. I agree with the motion. On top of it, I'd like to add that I think this would be something that we should be updated quarterly or maybe bimonthly from the Inspeccional Service Department or from the Public Safety Department. I'm not sure if it would, what committee it could go into. But this problem has obviously been a big one and it doesn't I know that we may have seen some relief, but I think the residents need to continue to be educated on how it's going and how it's progressing and how well we're doing so that we can, we get that good information. So I'd like to get some sort of updates, you know, maybe bimonthly would be nice.
Thank you, Counsel. So noted. This side, Counsel Powers?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm familiar with the two residents that Counsel Rizzo mentioned. Actually, about two weeks ago, I had the Health Department get down and bait the properties there on Bateman Avenue. And I guess the problems are still reoccurring down there. I spoke to the mayor this morning regarding this and it's my intention to speak with Nick Catnazo tomorrow morning and get these people some more relief down there so we can abate this situation almost entirely. Thank you.
Counsel Rotundo?
Thank you, Madam President. I have to applaud the mayor for putting more money into this process. As the mayor probably has alluded to, we are one of the few of the communities that are actually taking an aggressive stance on this issue. This is an issue that not only unique to Revere, but to other communities that surround us. I have a feeling that perhaps we'll probably need to put more money into it. But this is one of those, you know, quality of life and more importantly, public health issues that we really need to be aggressive on. And, you know, Mr. Mayor, this is Counsel. I want to applaud everybody for working together on this particular issue. It's for the betterment of our people and more importantly, it's for our children too. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Zambudo?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to restate what the mayor said. And to the citizens out there, don't be fooled into some trick to sign up into a contract because that sounds like a scam to me. So as part of our plan, you're not supposed to sign up to a contract and pay out of pocket. So please don't do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Morbido?
Thank you, Madam President. I think my counselor on the left hit the nail on the head. This is about quality of life and public health. This has also become a nuisance to everyone. But we're trying to curb the issue. We're not the only city who has this issue. A lot of neighboring, neighboring issues, neighboring cities have this issue. There we go. I'm tongue twat, twisted. My God, say that. So a lot of our neighboring cities have the same issue. You know, I can, I understand the frustration, but we're taking action on it. That's all I can tell the viewers.
Thank you. And if I may briefly, you know, I don't think this is something that we can necessarily fix in one meeting or in one discussion as my colleague Counselor Keefe mentioned. I think it's something that we should put into the Public Safety Committee where we can, if we have to have, you know, Nick come up several times and discuss it with us, maybe we'll say every other month or every three months. I think it's something that's worthwhile. I'll tell you, out of all the calls I receive, more than half are about this problem. And the stories are unbelievable. And I'm sure every counselor up here can tell you one, not good ones either. It's something that's affecting parts of the city that have never had this issue before, parts that are not near restaurants or dumpsters or areas that may have faced this. I can tell you in Ward 6, I'm getting more and more calls about it. I can tell you that we found three rats in my yard within the past two weeks. So it's something that's affecting everybody. So we're aware of it. The mayor's office is being proactive to fix it and to, you know, the efforts that we make now are not going to be seen right away. But within the next couple of years, hopefully we'll start to see those results as the population of the rats decrease. So I think we should send it to Public Safety. And I think we should have Nick come before us several times, like Counsel Keefe mentioned, maybe quarterly. I don't necessarily know if bimonthly is necessary, but quarterly to discuss the issue. So I'm going to put it in Public Safety. And if the clerk could also request that Nick be notified of that meeting so he could come before us. I think it's going to draw a lot of attention and people are going to want to talk about it. So I think Subcommittee is a better forum than to speak on the normal agenda for two hours about it. Public Safety. There's no further business this evening. This council is adjourned until September 17th. I wish everyone a happy and safe Labor Day holiday coming up next Monday. And I also want to remind everyone to get out and vote on September 4th. Please mark your calendars, set a reminder, tell your friends. It's kind of an off day, so don't forget to get out and vote. Thank you, everyone.